I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 Papillion City Council Meeting Order. Ms. Brown, would you please state your role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mungar.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Jaworski.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Anger.
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an affidavit of publication on file. The current topic of the Open Meetings Act is on the counter as you walked in. No presentations tonight. Ms. Powers, administrative report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Black. The contract has been signed and demolition work has started this week at the City Hall for the renovation project. Everything is on track. We're excited to get that project moving forward. Moody's announced last week that Papillion has once again secured the AA1 rating for its general obligation bonds, and this is also the rating that we have for our utility and our golf bonds as well. This is the second highest rating in Moody's system. Thank you, Nancy and your team, for all of your work on helping us secure that rating, especially during a global pandemic epidemic. Just a reminder that there'll be a Public Works Committee meeting at 5:30 PM on February 16th, and this is a follow-up from the meeting we had two weeks ago. And finally, the virtual conference session is in full strength. So keep an eye out for communication from Kendra if there's any conferences that you guys want help getting signed up for. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just a reminder, speak loudly when we're speaking. We are upgrading. We've got a slight upgrade to the sound system, just a couple of components need to come in. But like everything else with COVID, shipments are somewhat delayed. So probably the next council meeting may be about this one, and then we'll be back to full sound reinforcement. But we are still able to record. We've got sound that's picking up everything, and Tori is still recording, so we're still getting it out on the YouTube channel. But at least physically here, speak up when ready. Do we have a motion to approve a consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seem none? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Next two items are related. Item F1, Resolution R200198, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northwest quarter and tax lot nine in the northwest quarter and part of lot 10 in the southwest quarter, all in Section 15, Township 13 North, range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southeast corner of South 168th Street and Fairview Road, the applicant is Omaha Public Power District. This has been continued periodically. So the public hearing had previously been open. I'll go ahead and call for any additional proponents. Anybody want to speak in favor? You come up to the podium and state your name for the record. Welcome.
Great, good evening. My name is Tim Burke, and I'm president and CEO of Omaha Public Power District. And I'm certainly living closer to Papillion at 12705 South 75th Avenue. So just moved in not too long ago, so good to be here. Well, thank you very much. It's a great opportunity for me to talk a little bit about what we're calling now our Turtle Creek Generating Station. As we're doing the planning and as the council is considering this opportunity. I'll have you go to the next agenda item. I want to talk quickly, really about a couple of things. One, about what this project is. It's much bigger than just this generating station that we're talking about here in Sarpy County. It's really what we call "Power with Purpose." And also, there's really a shared interest and importance on this site that both the city of Papillion and the Omaha Public Power District team has worked so closely on over the last several months. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the approvals that we've already received, both at the state level and the local level as well, and some of the stakeholder engagement processes that we're currently in at this point in time. And then talk a little bit about future development and how the teams have really worked together to think about how we develop this property. If you want to go to the next slide, please. As we have talked about "Power with Purpose," our board approved in November of 2019 our "Power with Purpose" initiative. And this was really based on really a couple important elements. One is, our board has made a commitment to essentially retire three generating stations at our North Omaha facility up on the river north of the downtown area, and to convert two of our existing coal units to natural gas at the end of 2023. So that's a piece of this. We are modernizing our older natural gas generation, and we're converting some of our coal. Part of it is around our commitment on decarbonization. Where at our North Omaha facility, we're going to see an 80% to 90% reduction in our carbon emissions at our Omaha station. That is abutted by a variety of different kinds of developments, including residential as well. And of course, natural gas is a much cleaner and nicer emitter than maybe coal is. And so our board has made that commitment back in 2014, and we're now executing on that. The other thing we're doing is modernizing also our gas generation. So we're taking these three large old coal units that we've converted to gas, we're retiring them, and we're installing some modernized natural gas equipment that are faster, quicker in the market. It will improve not only our reliability, but our resiliency. The other item that's really important in this plan is that as we see this pretty significant growth occurring in Sarpy County, and certainly the western part of Sarpy County, you don't have to go too far south of 370 on Highway 50 to see the significant growth and development that has occurred. And we just continually see announcement after announcement. Those are all really positive things for this county. And I've been a resident of this county since 1989, so I certainly understand that. But in order for us to do that, we have to make sure that we have the generation available to meet that growing generation. And so part of this is also adding additional generation or capacity that would support our resiliency and our reliability commitments. Part of "Power with Purpose" too is also for us to continue our decarbonization. So our plan is to add anywhere between 400 to 600 megawatts of solar throughout our 5,000 square foot, excuse me, 5,000 square mile service territory from north of Blair all the way down to the Kansas border and includes Carter Lake and butts up to the Lincoln Territory as well. So somewhere in there, we're working to essentially develop some solar arrays, and by doing that, we will actually reduce our overall system carbon emissions by about 30%. So there's been a lot of changes going on across our service territory, across the regulations that we operate on and that we are committed to making sure that we're meeting. Our board has identified 15 strategic directives, and one of those strategic directives is called Strategic Directive Number 7. It's for us to be net zero carbon by 2050. And so we are doing that in a very thoughtful, very mindful, very planned way, and this is a component of our decarbonization initiative and plan. All of this is on the OPBD website, all of it is on our Community Connections website around "Power with Purpose." If any of the public would want to go and get some additional information on it, they can certainly do that. So it's really important for us as we begin these challenges of growth in load, growth in our service territory, to meet that ongoing growth. And so we've done that with what we call "Power with Purpose." And this project at the Turtle Creek Generating Station, as was identified by Mayor Black, is really an important element where we're very close to this growing load pocket that's occurring in Sarpy County, and it will really improve not only reliability but resiliency in a very economic and cost-effective manner. If you can go to the next slide, please. Why this site is really important is that it really meets our "Power with Purpose" objectives, and I'll talk a little bit about those. It supports the growth, it supports the reliability in our region and across our service territory. It is very close to critical infrastructure of our transmission structure that is currently in West Sarpy County. That is really one of the reasons why the growth is occurring there, specifically for some of the large loads that are now operating there in western Sarpy County. What's also important with this is, you know, OPBD has some unique statutory guidelines that we have, but we voluntarily have committed to the city of Papillion in great working relationship with the staff here to make sure that we participate in paying the fees, including some of the sewer connection fees that totaled in $2.4 million, to make sure that we're contributing our portion of that ongoing development in this part of the city of Papillion and this part of Sarpy County. And we're very pleased with that. Our commitment has been to the city of Papillion that we will make sure that we provide additional landscaping and additional screening above minimum standards. Again, this site that is sitting to the north, excuse me, to the south of Fairview Road may have stacks that may be in the 110 to 120 feet, but if you think about where they may be in the major thoroughfares, it'll be barely seen. And certainly, we're going to find ways where we look at screening and bearing that in the most important way. And so because of this critical infrastructure, because it is close to current transmission, and also because it's very close to a natural gas transmission line that operates north and south in that part of the county. So all of these elements are really important. And I will just say this to the council, and certainly the mayor and I have had this conversation, you have just an exceptional team to work with here. These can be very difficult projects, and what we have found is that the city, the staff, the mayor, in this case, have been open for the discussion and the dialogue. And I think we found a solution in which both parties really benefit. And I'm going to move to one of the next slides here, where we talk about some of the approvals that we've already received to date. So we went through the Power Review Board in which we received approval on December 4th. And one of our requirements is that we have to demonstrate the need for this generation, and the Power Review Board essentially approved that on December 4th. We've also gone in front of the Planning Commission of the city of Papillion on October 28th. We went to the Sarpy County and Cities Wastewater Agency to look for an exemption on a piece of this property, and that approval was given on October 28th of 2020. We started our stakeholder process back in September, where we engaged anybody in the public that wanted to engage on this topic about what we were doing, why we were doing it, and some of the impacts. In our first meeting, we had over 52 attendees, and we did a series long, multiple hour-long session on a variety of Q and As around what this project is and what it could be. Again, we've developed an online kind of Community Connection and Stakeholder website that is called OPBD Community Connection, where anybody can go on and see the development, the updates, the Q and As that we've developed, but also an opportunity for us to get feedback and input on this project. And in January, just a couple of weeks ago, we had our first transmission siting stakeholder process. Because when you build the generating station, we have to connect it to at least three separate substations, and so we're going through a transmission routing process, very open, very transparent. We're looking for continued feedback from the public and certainly the surrounding neighbors and the surrounding jurisdictions around this topic. I'll go to the next slide here, because I think this is where our desire and need for a generating station really matches up with the potential growth opportunity, where this is a plat done by Nado companies that we engaged with, which we have in the middle of this footprint, the OPBD Turtle Creek Generating Station, which will be 200 megawatt nominally, generating combustion turbines that are very close to a natural gas transmission pipeline, very close to our electric transmission intersection, so we are able to move this power across where the load is, across our region. But we're also looking at how do we use this property to develop it for the future? And so we work very closely with Nado companies and the city of Papillion to really find opportunities where we can grow and develop this. And actually, as we looked at this property, we were able to actually grow the tax valuation of this property via some of the work that we've done. And I think that goes to the great work from Mark Sturzma, from Amber, from Phil, from the team, really engaged around this project, really, just to challenge us, to make sure it's the right project for the city of Papillion. So we're anxious to get to this point at the city of Papillion for this approval, for us to move forward, and our team is anxious and excited to be able to do that. I'd love to answer any questions that you have, but in advance, I'd like to thank you for your confidence in us and our ongoing opportunity for us to work together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Your team's been great to work with.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have any other proponents? Oh, Mr. Mungar, go ahead.
I don't particularly have a question for you, but I'll repeat the comment I made in one of the sessions. I hope when you build this, that you use some imagination and make it look like something other than just a bunch of wires and metal framing. That, I mean, obviously, you're limited in what you have to do.
Sure.
But this is an area that's going to develop in the future, and so using some level of imagination and cosmetics would be favorable. And that's not really enough to turn it down, but I would appreciate it.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Tim?
Understood.
You log that line. I work hard with you and OPBD because what gives me some confidence in the building, and if you go by your similar states, you have 36th Street, you literally can't find it unless you're looking for it. I mean, it's really screened and covered. If you go out there, you can barely see the top of two of the stacks, if I remember correctly. You really don't see a big power plant like you and I, or some of us would traditionally think of, a big electric station. You can't see it.
We really don't really want anyone to see it. It is a critical infrastructure, and the work that we do is pretty critical to not only this metropolitan area, but it's absolutely critical for this whole region. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? Anybody neutral? All right. I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R200198?
Motion.
One by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Anger. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R200199, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a special use permit to Autory Utilities as a permitted use for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northwest quarter, tax lot nine in northwest quarter and part of tax lot 10 in the southwest quarter, all in Section 15, Township 13 North, range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southeast corner of South 168th and Fairview Road, the applicant is OPBD. The city council, the public hearing was continued again. It's still open. I'll call for proponents. We'll carry all your other comments over to this one, so you don't have to repeat it, Tim, unless you want to. Do you have anybody who wants to comment? I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R200199? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Thank you again. Item F3, Resolution R200200, resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land in the south half of the northwest quarter and the tax lot nine in the northwest quarter and part of tax lot 10 in the southwest quarter, all in Section 15, Township 13 North, range 11 East, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located southeast corner of South 168th and Fairview Road, OPBD. So motion to approve Resolution R200200.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. F4, Resolution R200201, a resolution to approve the SC South subdivision agreement. Is motion approved? One by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Those were all related to the OPBD item, so again, thank you, Tampa's partnership.
Thank you.
Item F5, Resolution R210011, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class D liquor license for Buck's LLC doing business as Bucky's Express 14, 11400 South 72nd Street, and a manager application for Tina Stone. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do you have any proponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. You don't have to say anything, but you just want to make sure council knows that you're here. Okay. Any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R210011?
Motion.
Councilman Stube, motion, Councilman Anger, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yeah.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Item F6, Resolution R210015, a resolution to approve a request that Sarpy County cede and transfer jurisdiction over the territory depicted with an Exhibit A, Oakleaf, to the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 13327. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210015?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Anger, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yeah.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
F7, Ordinance 1880, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to CC Community Commercial and R4 Multifamily Residential for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter, and part of the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter. Looks like an auctioneer. Located in Section 1, Township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, generally located southeast of 72nd and Schram Road, the applicant is Papio Park LLC, 72 Place. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1880? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Related item, F8, Resolution R210016, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter, and part of the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter. Located in Section 1, Township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located southeast of 72nd and Schram Road, the applicant Papio Park LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210016?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Also related, F9, Resolution R210017, a resolution to approve the 72 Place subdivision agreement. Motion to approve Resolution R210017?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Also related, F10, Resolution R210018, a resolution to approve the sewer and water connection agreement for SID 350, 72 Place. Motion to approve Resolution R210018? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yeah.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. Still related, F11, Resolution R210019, resolution to approve the 72 Place maintenance agreement for on-street parking. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210019? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube.
Yes.
Anger.
Yeah.
7808.
Motion passes. A number of the related items about the vacation of the unapproved parts, and we're going to handle these individually. F12, Ordinance 1914, an ordinance to approve the vacation of the unimproved part of First Street Rightofway, lying in the south half of the northeast quarter and in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, Section 26, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, with title thereto retained by the city of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1914? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungar.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Item F. 13, Ordinance 1915. An ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for the unapproved part of the First Street Right-Away line in the south half of the northeast quarter and in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 P.M., to be vacated by ordinance 1914 from the City of Papillion to the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District. Motion to approve ordinance 1915? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Item F. 14, Ordinance 1916. An ordinance to approve the vacation of the unapproved parts of Jefferson Street, Monroe Street, Beetle Street, Addition Street, and Alley Right-Away lying within or between blocks 21, 22, and 23 in the northwest quarter of Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 P.M., with title retained by the City of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1916?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Item F. 15, Ordinance 1917. An ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for the unapproved parts of Jefferson Street, Monroe Street, Beetle Street, Addition Street, and Alley Right-Away lying within or between blocks 21, 22, and 23 in the northwest quarter of Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 P.M., Sarkey County, Nebraska, to be vacated by ordinance 1916 from the City of Papillion to the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1917? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Item F. 16, Ordinance 1918. An ordinance to approve the vacation of the unapproved part of Addition Street in the northwest quarter of Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 P.M., Sarkey County, Nebraska, with title thereto retained by the City of Papillion. Motion to approve 1918? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Item F. 17, Ordinance 1919. An ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for the unapproved parts of Addition Street in the northwest quarter, Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 P.M., Sarkey County, Nebraska, to be vacated by ordinance 1918 from the City of Papillion to PW and RD Enterprises. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1919? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
That is all of those items, and I want to thank, uh, Public Works Director Jeff Thompson. That's been a, an old, old, old project that's needed to be done for a long time, and they finally found the time to do it, so thank you very much for that. Item F. 18, Ordinance 1920. An ordinance to rename Fall Creek Road abutting lots 407 to 421 Eagle Ridge to be South Fall Creek Road. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1920? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
Motion passes. Next two items are fireworks-related, annual item. First one is item F. 19, Ordinance 1921. An ordinance to amend Million Municipal Code, Section 11712, to approve for amendments to fireworks sales applications to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1921?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Mungar?
Second.
Second by Councilman Inberg. Mr. Mungar, did you have a potential amendment to this one?
Uh, I believe Mr. Jaworski has.
Mr. Jaworski?
Well, I thought we were going to do the amendment, um... That goes from February 1st through April 30th.
And that was, uh, handed out at everybody's table, so let me, let me read it to make sure that everybody knows what the amendment is. So, a motion to amend ordinance 1921, and what it's going to do is, in Section E, it's going to strike during the month of February of each year, and it's going to replace it with from February 1st through April 30th of each year, so it's going to extend the time period. And then it's going to add a new paragraph, um, after the sentence that reads, "The amended application may seek to change only the applicant's proposed fireworks sales location and matters directly affected by location." A new sentence, "If the amendment involves a proposed fireworks sales location that has not yet been reviewed by the city for that year, each amended application shall be accompanied by an amendment and processing fee in an amount specified in the master fee schedule." And then in the last sentence, April becomes June because of the prior change. Is that clear? So, that's a motion to amend. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Mungar. Do you have any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend?
I just had a comment, um, it proposes to bring to the vote of the council in the first meeting in June on whether we approve the move or not, which is really just three weeks before the fireworks stands are to open. So, it's really, in my view, it puts the council in a position, having it that late in the game, where if we don't approve it, we're really kind of screwing over that vendor and don't give them time to react to a vote that maybe doesn't go their way. So, I, the only change I would make is maybe back it up a little bit so there's, it, it gives the, the council a true, uh, decision rather than just a rubber stamp.
Change it from June to May? May, say, put it in May?
Yeah, I mean, I just.
I'd give it several weeks, probably.
It'd be the second meeting in May if they're doing it by April 30th.
Yeah, I think that's adequate, just, uh, maybe a couple more weeks. So, if we do turn the vendor down, they can then have enough time to decide whether they want to stick with the original location or just not have a stand that year. I'm not saying that we would do that, but I, I've got a vision of the situation for Mike.
We got a, it's a motion to, uh, we got a, a motion and a second on the motion to amend. It's a fairly simple change. You want to make a, do you want to go with that, or do you want to go forward with what we originally had?
I would say, I, I like that idea, change June to May and then everything's good, wouldn't it be?
Who's, who made the second?
I did. I've got a comment. I, I think I have a problem with that in that the object here is to give the applicant, the people who want to sell fireworks, an opportunity to come in with a new location after they've already been approved. So, really, all we're looking at, at that point, is that new location. And so, I'd say the question, you know, and basically, they need to know whether that location has been approved or not as early as possible because they're going to have to get it all set up. So, I would just ask, well, okay, if somebody comes in at the end of April, April 30th, and has a new location, can the staff review it and provide us the information before our first meeting in June? If they can do it, then I'd say, fine, let's stay where we're at because it gives the applicant the most certainty as to where they're going to operate. If you can't do it, well, then, fine, let's give them, gotta give you more time.
Well, it's my understanding that the person that, they're not here tonight, but that put force this amendment, the original amendment, uh, did speak with, they told me that they had spoken to the vendors, and they thought that that was a system with other communities, and they thought that timeframe would work. Particularly with, I understand what, uh, Councilman Sunday's saying, but we're not dealing with the permit itself. They already have the permit.
I get that part, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, what if we don't approve of that new location?
Well, if we're not going to approve that new location, we ought to tell the applicant as soon as possible.
And that's why I'm saying we should move that vote.
But you're saying, but you're squeezing them a little red because they have to have to, sure, because then they're caught between July 4th and May.
Right, now, they're going to be caught between, say, June 3rd and, and, and June 25th, only three weeks to react. So, I'm saying, make the meeting before that, in mid-May. Have the vote in mid-May so they have more time to react.
Well, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
And all I'm saying is, what's, I, I, I guess it means so little to me, but what's it mean to the staff? Can you get it done?
Second meeting in May, reasonable?
Mr. Stube's got a good question here. Why do we have to approve it? Why can't staff just approve it? Why does that, I mean, we're approving the permit. Let staff approve the location.
The answer to that is that our code says that the application fixes the, the location.
Fixes the location.
Yeah, so the, the staff doesn't have that leeway.
So, staff, don't approve the second meeting in May? Make that a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor? So, um, any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Please vote.
This is a second amendment.
This is to amend the motion so it extends from, uh, just being the month of February to being February to April for the application?
Oh.
And then, we'll lull you all to sleep. Go to sleep, go to sleep. And then, um, and then if there is an amendment during that timeframe, and it's a new location, there is a fee involved because now we've got a new inspection to do, and then it will be the second meeting in May, uh, would be the approvals.
But the permit deadline does not change?
Permit deadline does not change.
Well, it doesn't change from what this amendment.
Correct. Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungar?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Inberg?
Yes.
Seven eight zero nine.
So, that motion is now amended. Any discussion on the amended motion?
Mayor, I, are, are we talking about the motion, motion now for the permit? Because I'm a little confused now.
So, we're talking about the, uh, motion that, um, allows for the amending of your application. That's, that's what we're voting on now. We're not, we're not voting on the number of licenses, we're not talking on actual people for this year, just on the, the new ability to amend locations.
Okay.
Mr. Mungar?
But if we vote to approve this now, that ends the changes in that order, right? And if somebody wants to increase the numbers, they have to start over again and go three meetings.
If you want, if somebody's contemplating changing the number of licenses, that's a totally different section we, we haven't dealt with, so that would be a new ordinance. That's not for tonight. This is a different section. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Dillon?
Yes, we have, we have.
See, and I disagree. I think what we are doing is amending the ordinance number 1921, the fireworks amendment. And whether we amend it with this section only or we amend it with other sections, I think we could do that.
I think ordinance 1921 is specific to Section 11712. The number is in 11713, and that's not a topic of the ordinance. Could be my interpretation, but look, Mr. Dillon.
But I agree, we, we haven't advertised any change to under 117-13, so we need to do that in our separate ordinance.
Okay, so let's look at the timeline. If somebody wants to increase the number to 15, 16, or whatever, when is the earliest we can get that done?
That would be an ordinance change and a little bit of public education. An ordinance takes three readings, um, an introduction by a council member, then a public hearing, then council discussion, and a vote. Typical process is those are on individual nights, so three different council meetings. Uh, so that implies probably a six-week process, um, unless a council member would waive a second or third reading, which is allowed by our rules, which would speed the whole process up, but we rarely do those. Um, typical for bond, we've done it a couple of other times, and they are rare, but that's the process. So, it'd be s- six weeks unless it's sped up by the rules via the council.
Okay, so we turned somebody down tonight, and, uh, then somebody, an ordn, a council member introduces an ordinance at the next meeting to increase the number to allow them to come in. The soonest we can get it done under the usual procedure would be the second meeting in March. If we start at the.
Yeah. Because the introduction would be the next council meeting.
Which would give them then one month to get their application. Is that right?
If you increase the number.
I don't want to, but we're. Well, maybe, but there's been discussions of it, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that if we don't change it tonight, yeah, that's the timeline wrong.
March 16th is the magic number.
I think we're moving off of the topic of the motion that's on the floor, though.
Oh, yeah, but see, I think the fact it's not the only motion that should be on the floor.
Well, we deal with them one at a time. So, let's deal with the motion that's on the floor, which is the amendment of the location. Any other discussion on that? Please vote.
I got a question. I, I got a question. Is there something here that has?
What I do have.
Is it specific to amending locations?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and come up to the podium.
And I'll ask you a question.
So, if we change the location.
Can you state your name for the record?
Um, Kayla. Uh, if we change the location and we come back and it's, the location is not approved, then are we out? Do we not get a chance to change to a different location and try to get a, a second location approved?
The current process is you make application for your license, that's approved, and that is specific to a location.
Correct.
So, you still have that location. If later on, for whatever reason, minds change, we will go to a different location, currently, that's not allowed. That's what this motion's doing, is opening that process to change minds. Um, if that, uh, new location is not approved, for whatever reason, um, my understanding of the rules is you still have your license approved at your current location. It didn't, not be, not, not approving the second location didn't take the license away from the original location.
Correct, but, I mean, we said, obviously, we said, empty lots, we don't want to move, we've been there for years, but if that realtor decides to build on that, starting when fireworks are supposed to, obviously, and then we come back with a different address and you don't approve of that, then our license is void?
Yeah, the mo, the motion on the floor, uh, doesn't have a provision for a second, a third, and a fourth location. It's one, it's amendment for each change.
Well, again, I'm going to disagree. The motion on the floor simply says that up until April 30th of each year, an application, act, whose application has been approved by the council may, uh, may file an amended application.
Correct.
I read that to say, you may file as many, as many amended applications as you want.
Right.
But the way of that, if I come in on.
But, but the issue becomes, the deadline for that application to be filed is April 30th. The decision point now is the second meeting in May, so if it's denied, you can't give a new application because you're past the application deadline.
Yeah, but-
But if I come in on April 1st?
April 30th is the deadline based on the motion that's on the floor.
If you-
But if I went in earlier, is what I'm saying, then can I go to a city council meeting earlier?
Yeah, if you lose your location, if you lose, you can lose like unlimited number of locations up until April 30th.
Okay.
Because you just keep filing new applications.
Correct.
And then whatever is the last one you have by April 30th, that's the one you make the six weeks.
Perfect, that's a question, thank you.
Did we interpret a Mr. Telem?
It's the lawyer's job.
Mr. Telem?
Yes.
Are you interpreting the same way Mr. Mungard? Explain.
Um, what, what's up for vote right now is ordinance number 1929.
Correct.
As amended to provide for the February 1st through April 30th period to file an application to change a location.
Yep.
And that's what's up for vote right now.
So did you have a question on that, Mr. Mungard, that needs clarification?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, as far as I'm concerned, that allows an unlimited number of amended applications up until April 30th.
I suppose, I, it creates a lot of confusion for the city, somebody came in with multiple applications, I would think that there'd have to be some discussion going on between the applicant and the city to narrow that down.
We've never had a process where you could change your location.
No.
And now we're having, we're, we're allowing the process.
If this is-
Now we're talking about multiple changes of locations, that seems silly to me. Well, I think what we have here is perfectly adequate, we should just-
Well, but, but you could correct that wrong, but I understood the reason that someone suggested this change was, in the event, primarily in the event that you have a location and develop for sell it after you get a permit, then obviously you have to find another spot. And that was to deal with that. I mean, that's one of the reasons, but that was a difficulty that I was told that vendors have, that they may have a spot and have reserves and everything else, but then the developers get offered a lot and sell it, and they're not allowed to use it, so they get allowed to move to a different location, correct?
And, and, and I'm going to agree with that, Mr. Ingber, I'm just saying, that can happen more than once.
Yeah.
If that happens more than once, I think you could still come in and get, get a new location as long as you meet the April 30th deadline.
Mr. Gaines, did you have something?
Yeah, I think that what I'm hearing is, and I heard multiple locations, but you only have one permit, so you can come in and ask for one location, and, and if you wanted to do that 10 times and change your location 10 times, then that's my interpretation of it, and I don't see a limitation of it in the, in the proposed change, so that would be my interpretation.
So one, April 30th deadline and pay the fee?
Yeah. Yeah, because there's a fee every time you ask for a change.
Nicole, Nicole, who is the city clerk who actually manages this process, has a comment.
I think the issue that she's raising is that this specific amendment that we've already adopted sets a specific council meeting for the amended applications to be heard, so I think her question is, if she brings in an amended location on April 1st, can that go to the second council in April so that if it's denied, she still has additional council meetings prior to? So I think the issue is that we have set a specific council meeting to review the amended-
As opposed to, as soon as we get the application, process, I get it to the next council, make a decision.
And the date of decision would be after the deadline when you can file, which means you're in-
Mr. Sunday.
You could just change the language to read, no later than that meeting, and that would, that would open it up.
You okay with that, Mr. Jaworski?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mungard, you made the second, are you okay with that?
Mayor, this isn't even mine, so I don't know how I got this stuff when you hit me.
Mr. Gaines.
Do we need to make a substitute amendment?
Well, probably should, um, as much discussion as there's been.
Then I'll, I'll make a substitute amendment to make the decision no later than the second meeting in May.
Well, just take that as a motion to amend, because we already amended the previous.
I, I think we already have passed the motion to amend.
We did, then, we passed the, uh, the amend, the motion to amend, and so now what we're, so we have a motion as amended, so now what we're doing, based on Mr. Gaines, is bringing another motion forward.
We could do another motion to amend.
Yeah.
To change that one sentence that we originally changed to read, uh, second meeting in May, if you want, you can do a motion to amend that to say-
No later?
No later than the second meeting in May.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gaines, a second by Mr. Sunday, any more discussion on that point? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Ingber?
Yeah.
Seven A zero nine.
So we have a motion as amended, and just for clarity, let me summarize it again, so we've got the, so we've got the motion on the table to allow the new process to amend locations, and in that, we can take the location amendments between February 1st and April 30th. If it is a new location, there is a fee associated, and that's in the master fee schedule, and once we get the application, it will be processed and taken to a council meeting no later than the second meeting in May. That's clear, please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yeah.
Jaworski?
Yeah.
Stewie?
Yes.
Ingber?
Yeah.
Seven A zero nine.
Thank you for your question. Item 20, Resolution R 2101, 0010, a resolution to approve applications for the 2021 summer firework season, June 25th, July 4th, is there a motion to approve Resolution R 210010? Mr. Jaworski?
I'd like to lay this motion over until March 16th.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I, I'll explain why, I'll make a motion that we approve the first nine applicants because they comply with our process that we have in place today. They complied with the deadline, they complied with having them in, and, and our process of how we determine how we fill the first 10 spots. Since they are in those nine spots, I don't think we should delay them, we should approve those nine spots, and if you want to hold over this item to make changes, like you guys are talking about to amend it, uh, we should do that, but I don't think we should penalize the people that comply with what we asked them to do.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, Mr. Telem, go ahead.
Sorry, I got to pull up Robert's Rules of Order here.
Yep.
Um, there's a hierarchy of motions, and some motions that are higher in the hierarchy have to be voted on first before the other ones, and in this case, a motion to postpone to a certain time, which is what council member Jaworski raised, is higher than a motion to amend, which is what Mr., uh, council member Ingber raised, so I would suggest taking up the postpone, postpone to the, uh, March 16th motion first, vote one way or the other on that, and then we can move, um, well, I would probably take-
I'm not sure I heard it back.
I quit, I was going to go, we didn't, there wasn't a second on the table, there was a motion, but no second.
There was no, there was no opportunity for a second, because, so I will second it. Now, now we have a motion with a second, right?
This to postpone all of it?
Yeah.
Well, that's the motion on the table, so I just want to be careful, um, how we proceed. So the motion on the table is to table this whole item, and there is a second on that. So if we vote on that, it is tabled, and because it's tabled, does that prevent Mr. Ingber then from bringing back tonight those nine?
Yes, it would.
Can he make a, can he amend the motion to table, to only table a portion and accomplish both? Can a motion to table, table a portion of a motion?
Mayor, the reason I'm tabled this is because I want to get this up to 15 where it probably should have been to begin with, so I'm thinking, what is this going to hurt if we table this for six weeks and allow three more people in? Everybody's still going to have the same opportunities, the nine people that are in there are in, it's just going to, instead of kicking some people out, it's just going to make it fair for everybody.
I want to keep the conversation going appropriately, but I do want to honor Robert's rule, we got a motion to second to table, we're in council discussion, I think it's appropriate for Mr. Ingber to talk about why he maybe went out and want to, and then we can kind of figure it out, so I don't think it's inappropriate, Steve, that you, go ahead, with what your thoughts were.
Well, you know, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Jaworski, but when you say, well, it's fair to everybody, well, no, it really isn't, yeah, let's look at the principle of things, we have a requirement by ordinance, the day submitted request of permit by a date certain for council decision, date certain, and here we are tonight, and the way our process is today, those nine out of the 10 slots that are filled are entitled for a decision tonight because they comply with everything in our process, the only ones that are not being, wouldn't be considered tonight are those that fill like the 10 spot, and as it stands tonight, two additional spots, some people on the council approved of, so it's not going to harm in them, but certainly I don't see the reason why we have to put off a decision about nine that are doing what we've told them to do, I don't see what advance, what, the reason for that, we get one-
Mr. Stewie.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, and I think one of the things that we just did previously was to give more flexibility with regard to changing locations, so now all of a sudden, we move six weeks to March whenever, that just now condenses the ability for them to look at another location if they deem that's something they need to do, so I would agree with that, that we should approve what, what's currently in front of us up to what we're allowed, and if we want to expand in the future, we should do that.
Mr. Sunday.
We've, we've got the first nine, and I'm looking at them, and every one of them has multiple years of experience.
Right.
In this process, and the only other one that does have multiple years of experience that's not in that front nine is Wellspring Church, they've been doing this for four years, it looks like, everybody else is in their first or second year, um, so I'm wondering, what, what is it that Wellspring Church did wrong, what didn't they comply with? You, you said that the others, the front nine, you said complied with the rules and the deadline, what, what is it that Wellspring Church didn't comply with?
Can I? Can I call them?
The first nine were grandfathered.
Okay, but that's not the same thing as not following the rules, he said that the front nine followed the rules.
No, I'm talking about the ones that would normally be approved tonight because of our process, I'm not, didn't say nobody else here didn't follow-
I misunderstood you there, I thought that's what you were saying.
No, everybody got their permits in on time, everybody did what they had to do, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm saying by our process in place today, those nine on our list tonight are grandfathered, and they would've been, they would, they would have been approved tonight.
The grandfathered are part of our process, Mr. Gaines.
Okay, so I want to go back to the procedure with Mr. Telem, if, if the hierarchy of Robert's rules says that a motion to table is, is higher, then you shouldn't, there should be no room for amending that motion to table, is that correct? Because that, that should be a blanket motion that's higher than the other ones, and I'm, I'm just talking about procedurally, I'm not talking about the-
Yeah, so procedurally, I think you're right, so procedurally, the motion on the floor is to table.
So therefore you can't make an amendment to-
Right. And there is a desire from the discussion that there, we probably address a different item, so if we do a, if we table it, unless Mr. Telem says something else, we're, we're pretty much done for tonight, um, so if there is a desire by the council to actually act on what Mr. Ingber is saying, I think what we'd want to do is withdraw the motion to table, deal with Mr. Ingber's, then come back and table the balance.
If, if the person that made-
If the person wants to do that, but Mr. Telem.
Yeah, I, I think the motion to postpone is still higher in the hierarchy, so we take that up, if there's some desire to amend things so that we take up the nine tonight and the, the other three or whatever next month, then, um, the vote should be to against motion postponed, so then we can take up what, what we're going to do tonight.
Against, or they could withdraw the motion.
Yeah, withdraw the motion or vote against the motion.
Mr. Sunday.
I would just propose that we vote on the motion, if there's not support for it, it won't pass anyways, let's just vote on it.
Any other discussion? So again, just so we know what we're voting on, unless it's withdrawn, uh, the motion on the floor is a motion to table, um, to March 16th, and because that cannot be amended, um, a positive vote on that tables everything until March 16th, uh, a no vote would not table it, and we would be back to the original motion as amended that we started with, unless there is a desire to withdraw the motion to table, Mr. Gaines.
And we're still in council discussion?
We're still in council discussion.
So for the applicants, I intend to vote, I, I'm going to vote for the motion to table, but I intend to approve all the applications, but it's not an issue with the applications, I think there's an issue with the process, and I think I've had this discussion with Ben before, I may have had it with you, Kayla, so it's not an issue against those nine of them.
We table this.
Nine applicants, but I do want to discuss the process to allow more, if that includes having discussed, if you guys have advanced, I'm always open to that too, what your feeling is about increasing the number.
Let's have, let's have one at a time, please, Mr. Ingber.
The only thing I don't understand, if you intend to vote for them all anyway, what value is you, is, is it to hold off and table tonight?
Because-
You're going to vote for those nine anyway.
Because there's a motion on the floor to table, and procedurally, that's what needs to happen, and I, and I think, and I thought this for nine years, that there may need to be some changes to that to allow other people in, and I, um, until we get into discussion on moving forward, that's what I intend to do tonight, but I want to assure the applicant that this isn't about approving their application, it's about not disproving or, or denying other people's applications tonight, and they have to restart through the process, so that's, that's just the way that, that I'm thinking about it.
Mr. Mungard.
Okay, well, I'm going to do the opposite, I'm going to vote against the motion to continue, but I will sit here and I will assure all those nine that yes, I will vote to approve them, whenever we get to approve them, because the ordinance tells me I have to, it, you know, it isn't just that you've done, you've done everything right, it's that our ordinance has a provision that gives you a right that I can't tell you no, so, uh, I look at it that, well, I just assumed if I can't tell you no, I have to tell you yes, because that's what the ordinance says, I just assumed do it tonight and get it over. Now, I strongly disagree with that part of the ordinance, and I'm hoping that eventually we make some sense and end it, but that's what it says tonight, that's what I'm going to do.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
No.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
No.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stewie?
No.
Ingber?
No.
Three A's, four N's, motion failed.
Three A's, four N's, so motion fails, okay, so we're back to the motion that was on the table, um, which is the motion-
We don't have a motion yet to approve the resolution.
Oh, yes, the motion was made after the other one was on the table, so-
Right.
Uh, Mr. Ingber made-
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, nine permit, permits that we were required to approve tonight, uh, and we'll, I'll switch that.
I want to make a substitute motion also, when I mean-
You're testing me.
I know, but I, it's-
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion, if we're going to take the nine that add consecutive years, then we should take Wellspring, there should be 10 for tonight, and then the rest will have to work on the other, or we just go with the way it is now, just go with 12, and whoever the 12 are, are, I mean, I just thought this would be easy, obviously it isn't, but I don't think waiting six weeks was going to hurt much, but obviously it is, we're going to be out working on fireworks tomorrow when it's 20 below, I'd be in that part of it.
I just want you for the record, state unequivocally, I'm the one who suggested we don't do all this rehab on an ordinance that's been working fine up till now, other than adding a couple more, uh, spots perhaps, but I don't disagree with his suggestion, I'll change the amendment, uh, Wellspring has been with us for four years, uh, we've never had the place I'm aware of, um, so, and, and they are, is where you use the word entitled, to use your term, they're entitled to that 10 spot because it's vacant, that's what we've always done in the past, uh, they're the next one up, so I would include them as the number, number 10 permit holder, and that doesn't prevent anybody else on this council to come back to the next council meeting and add 800 war permits if that's what they want, or however they want to do it, but I'm just going to honor what the ordinance calls for us to do tonight, and I think that includes adding Wellspring.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so then, again, just procedurally, I want to check, the, the agenda that was published had a resolution that, that called for all 12, and so I think that procedurally to be appropriate, I think what we want to do is we want to handle the motion, um, to approve Resolution R 210100, and then we'll do the amendment to the 10. Does that make sense?
Because in a sense you offered-
Because the, because the resolution is for the 12, so we want to amend that to the, to the 10 and carry over the two, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr., so we have a motion and a second, Mr. Mungard.
Well, I'm going to vote against that, I will vote for the nine, but when you add Wellspring to it, you give them the fifth year, and you're giving them an automatic, and you're making the problem worse, and that now, next year, we'll have 10 that are guaranteed, and I've said, it's the same thing I've said for the last two years, I've got nothing against Wellspring, but given us that, give it anybody that five-year guarantee, as outlived its need, its the need, and to continue to give Wellspring, uh, a, a lot of permit year after year and give them that guarantee, I can't do this.
Well, I will, you, you, you know, you and I have disagreed about this for years, I happen to like the idea that we have vendors that has a track record with us, they, we know they don't violate the, the fireworks ordinances, we know they sell legitimate products, we know they know our rules, what we expect of them, every year they clean up the property, and they're reliable, we know what to expect, I think there's some value to that, that every, every year, we have 15 permits, everybody goes, the, the permits that will decide who's deserving this year, because then you may be dealing with politics, number one, number two, you may be dealing with vendors you've never had a relationship with, and then you may end up with complaints from the public, from the police, whatever the case may be, I think there's some value to having some, some reliability of your gear, but we added two more, because you wanted two more this last year, remember right, and we added two more spots, and that's what we're going to, that's what I thought we were going to vote on tonight, but we're not, so we, we are adding additional spots.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mungard.
First off, no, I was not part of the FNA committee for the, that added two spots, I have been preaching for two, two prior years that that five-year guarantee is going to handcuff us and get us in a problem, we are now in a corner because we don't have options, we, we have to approve nine, if we're going to go that direction and start giving people guarantees, then let's get rid of the limit, why do we have a limit if our ordinance says we don't have choices? So, I'm saying, I, same thing I've said for the last two years, you know, it's bad enough we got to the point where nine out of 10 are guaranteed, because what that happens, then if we have a limit, we've got perfectly deserving people who can create that same record that you're talking about, and we never give them a chance, it also, by having that limit and doing what you're, you're suggesting doing, it automatically makes that permit have a value in and of itself, they don't even have to do it, because now they got something that they can sell to other people, and I've heard stories, that happened, so that's why I'm going to vote against giving it to Wellspring.
But you didn't hear what I said, I didn't say we should never, nobody should have a chance, we added two more this year, I'm saying is, if, if the council, a majority of the council feels like we have five additional vendors over the 10 that we, we have right now, or 12 actually now, if we have three additional vendors, if there's value, the council thinks that they're local organizations, that they deserve to have a fundraiser, I don't have a problem with that, and if they continue to fundraise every year, and they eventually get to that five-year point, then we reach a comfort level, I'm not saying, I, I'm not putting a limit on it, I'm just saying that I think there's some value to having some sort of seniority process, because it makes it reliable at least to a point, if you want to add, if somebody comes back to this council, uh, next council meeting says, I want to add five more permits because there are deserving groups, so be it, then the majority of the council can decide eventually what to do.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that Mr. Mumber's position is that because he disagrees with the grandfather clause, he wants to keep a certain vendor out. To me, that's like, that's akin to an employer who wants to fire or let go an employee who's just about to qualify for certain longevity benefits, and then cut their legs out from under them at the last minute, because he doesn't like those, that's unfair, I'm sorry, very unfair. And I would very much oppose that, cutting out Wellspring Church this year just because they're about to qualify for what this council voted for, by the way. That's playing puppet master behind the scenes, and that's very unfair, and I would not support that at all.
Okay, I want to get back, I want to get back to the motion that's on the floor, though, so we don't confuse items. So we've got the original motion as it was presented, which is the 12. We have a motion and a second on that. Now, I just want to clarify where we're at in the process. Now we've got a, you've made a motion to amend for the 10, and that has been seconded, and so now we are on, so we're on discussion of that point. Is that correct, Mr. Nealon, where we're at?
Did we ever have the original motion to approve...
Hold on, I'm asking Mr. Nealon for a legal opinion. That's where we're at. We had the original motion and the second.
It was the nine, though.
Oh, we didn't? Okay, that was the step we were missing. Okay, so is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 21-0010? That's the original motion with 12. Then if there's a motion and a second on that, then we can do the amendment. Mr. Ingberg.
Motion.
So we motioned by Councilman Sunday?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Thank you for that clarification. So now we have a motion by Mr. Ingberg?
Yes.
Is that for the nine or the 10?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion to amend for the 10?
Second.
The nine grandfather plus Wellspring. We have a second by Councilman Sunday, so now we're back to discussion on that topic. Mr. Nealon.
And should he add that the motion also contemplates that the other two will come up, will, will have to have some kind of disposition on what to do with the other two, will they come up at some future time, or...
Would we make that part of this motion, or would that be a table? So...
Well, I'll add to that motion. The additional two new permits that we have available this year will be considered the next council, but I don't see the next council meeting.
March 16th.
The subsequent council meeting, because somebody may come back and want to change it again.
Okay.
March 16th?
Yep.
Yeah. So we're okay with that? Make that frontline? Okay. Council discussion, Mr. Gaines.
Okay, so I don't want to speak for Councilman Mumber, but I think the point is, is that by code, we have to approve these nine people, okay? But I think what he's trying to prevent is having one other person, granted, they went through the process just like everybody else, but they're not there. So we don't, if we make a decision to not approve number 10, that's our priority, but we don't have a priority of whether to approve or not the first nine. And I think that that's, and maybe this process has been a little bit confusing, but that's where I'm at also. And so if we have an amendment on the floor, I'd like to offer a subsequent amendment to reduce the number that we approved tonight to one through nine, and take up the other available permits on March 17, 16, whatever date that...
Can you have a substitute motion or a motion to amend?
Time out, Mayor.
Hold on, I want to ask Mr. Nealon something. Okay. Mr. Jaworski.
Here, it doesn't matter, I'm going to, whatever we got to do, I'm going to try and add three more to this after this meeting, we'll get an amendment going. Wellspring's is going to be in this next, next one anyway, they're going to have five years, they are going to be permitted, they're going to have whatever grandfather rights there are, so they might as well just be in this one right now. So that's all I can say.
Any other?
Just a second.
Mr. Mumber.
Okay, now, you've put me in a position where I'm going to vote for.
Hold on one second. I want to, I want to, again, there's a lot going on, I want to make sure procedurally, but Mr. Gaines made a substitute motion. Is there a second? I see no second, so the substitute motion fails. So Mr. Mumber, go ahead.
You all made it?
Mr. Mumber, go ahead.
Well, I think Mr. Gaines is substantively correct, but... Okay, let's vote on Mr. Gaines.
I mean, just so we can have a vote, I'm not supporting it, but I will second it, so we have a vote.
You know what? I'll draw my substitute motion, and we can go back.
Okay, so we're back to Mr. Ingberg's, where we're in discussion on Mr. Ingberg's motion on the 10.
I made it.
But there's no other discussion. Mr. Mumber.
I'm going to vote for this, because to vote against it is contrary to what our ordinance says, because there's nine people, nine applicants who get it. Now, I disagree with the 10, but I'm going to do what the code tells me to do, and I'm going to approve the nine, and if that means approving the...
The 10. The 10's the motion on the floor.
And if that's what I have to do, I'll do it, because that's what the code tells me.
Any other discussion? An affirmative vote will approve the nine grandfather plus Wellspring and hold the other two over until the March 16th meeting.
So the reason for March 16th is what?
I'm not sure, other than that was the date of the motion.
Ah, there are three more.
The discussion that came up, so you asked me what's it for, and I'll honestly say I'm not sure, because we have no motions other than that's the date. What I pick up from the discussion, though, is a desire by some council to increase the number from 12. And so I think there's an expectation out of this meeting that at least staff will prepare an ordinance to increase the number, and then council can deal with that, and to deal with that, if it moves forward, takes three meetings.
My only comment would be is that if two others that are in front of us today, if there's some consensus with regard to the council, that's a resolution, so it could happen in February if we decide with, to approve two others. Correct?
I think you'd have to bring a new resolution forward.
Okay. But again, it wouldn't require going into March to do that, we could do it in February.
If there was consensus to bring a new resolution forward, just like any resolution. Okay. Please, is it clear what you're voting on? Your vote, a vote yes is to approve the nine grandfather plus Wellspring and hold the other two forward until March 16th.
Can I make one comment on that?
Yes.
If anybody might think we have a lousy fireworks ordinance, the nine approved it. So I got to mess with different things to amend that, but it'll never happen, I know, I don't know, that we have a lousy fireworks ordinance.
Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mumber?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eight.
Okay, Mayor, time out. Now, do I have to bring an ordinance up to add three more, or can I...
No, I think from the discussion, and you specifically saying that, we know the intent is at least one council member wants that ordinance. We go ahead and get that prepared, there will be somebody that can introduce that, and then we can have a public hearing and vote.
Okay, very good.
Mr. R.
That was a motion to amend, so now we need a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah.
No, we have a motion, we need to vote.
I'm getting my master's degree in rubber tooling order. So the motion has now been amended, the motion as amended is on the floor. Any more discussion? Please vote. Now you're voting on actually granting them.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mumber?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. F-21, Resolution R. 21-0014, Resolution to approve a license agreement, Harry Bossard, American Legion Corps 32, 230 West Lincoln Street, Papillion, Nebraska, regarding the Legion's proposed temporary and limited use of an adjacent small parcel of City Park property. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 21-0014?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mumber?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eight.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items, committee reports, I think the only one that's met is Finance and Administration. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The White Association should be met tonight, with one item only on the agenda. We discussed, had a discussion about the general obligation debt philosophy. It came to the committee because we have a developer that made a request that we consider changing the GO debt and how it was arranged. And basically, the long and short of it is, at this point in time, the committee did not, does not recommend we change our current general obligation debt philosophy. Instead, we asked the, or directed, or to use that term, the staff to work with, speak with the developer, have some suggestions that would include some possible changes regarding the GO debt. And further, depending on what those conversations develop, there's a possibility the staff may come back to the committee and/or the full council to make the adjustments to the GO debt if they think it's been worked out. But as far as our philosophy, we currently have them in place.
Thank you very much.
I would just add that we also elected Councilman Ingberg as chairman of our committee.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Any comments from the floor? Any council comments?
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stube.
Okay, so I'm going to get on my colleague's back a little bit with regard to our fireworks. So I would disagree with him from a standpoint, and I don't know how long Mr. Mumber's been on the council, but I think he's been on council longer than...
He wrote it.
Yep. I would say that, you know, in the number of years that I've been on council, I think it was only until recently that we had this issue with regard to fireworks permits. But if you go down through the list, I think we in the city of Papillion, because you're looking at all the staff that go through a pretty significant effort of putting this all together, you inspect, and we have permits that are issued to companies that have been doing it for 20-some years, and I think that's a testament to the program that we have in here. Now, there might be a little bit of disagreement with the number of permits that are given, but I think from the standpoint of the overall program that we have, I think it's good. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Mr. Jaworski.
And I'd like to thank Public Works for their snow removal over the last snowstorm, when it snowed for like 22 hours heavily. That had to be tough, and they did a great job, so just tell you guys, great work.
Yeah. Any other council discussion, Mr. Ingberg?
Were you going to mention Colonel Harrington in your comments?
Great idea.
Otherwise, I will, I just...
Go ahead.
No, I think you're going to... Well, the mayor, I think, attended today a birthday celebration for retired Air Force Colonel Bill Harrington, who turned 101 today. And he flew over 50 combat missions over Germany and France and Austria during World War II, and served in the Air Force, I think, until 1963, I think.
Came down in '61.
Yeah. And anyway, he has a lot of good stories to tell about his service in World War II. There's many times he didn't know he was going to make it back from a mission, so I just want to mention that, that out of some respect for Colonel Harrington, who turned 101 today.
He lives at Papillion Manor, and then, of course, they're all in quarantine, but they arranged to have a ceremony, and everybody was in the parking lot, and they had it piped into his room, and everybody was outside of his window. Lieutenant Governor Foley came and spoke, Colonel Dayton from the 55th that offered came and spoke and gave him a presentation and gave him some gifts. It had a strong representation from the Police Department, Fire Department, a lot of department heads, employees, staff. It was a really good event, so I think a couple of news stations were there, so you might watch that, and if you're on Facebook, Papillion Manor did Facebook Alive and the whole ceremony's out there as well. It was a pretty cool ceremony, so thank you, Mr. Ingberg. Any other comments? Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. I think, I think you're aware, I got elected to the Executive Board of the League of Nebraska Municipalities, and with legislature in session, that executive board has started to meet. And so we take the votes on statewide and what cities' stances are on different bills. So if you've got any, again, if you've got any specific bills of interest, let me know that, because I can take it up to the state level with the league as we meet, I'll keep you updated on that. We also kicked off the civil service process. As everybody knows, Chief Lyons submitted his resignation. He's basically taken, he's got a good opportunity to go back home, and so he'll be leaving us at the end of March, I think. No, March 1st is the end of February. And so Lieutenant, Deputy Chief of Widdin will be the acting interim chief, and so we did start the civil service process. And so applications actually opened up yesterday. We'll be taking applications all of February, and then we'll close applications. Civil Service will do a couple of rounds of their scrubbing the resumes, panel interviews, that type of thing. And then with the civil service process, we don't participate in that, the Civil Service Commission runs that. And then once they rank all of the applicants, the top three names come to me, and then I'll have a little bit of a process that will figure out to make the selection of the final, and then that comes to you then for final approval and affirmation. So I think we're targeting on the current timeframe, May, end of May, to hopefully have a name coming up too young. So if you have questions or input on that, let me know, otherwise spread the word that that is open. We had a wastewater agency board meeting, nothing substantial on that really. And then United Cities had a meeting, but again, it's based on where the legislature's at, that's just actively monitoring bills. And this year, the legislature is moving fast. They're having hearings morning and night, and in some cases, are only given 24 hours notice. And so the legislature may be dealing with a bill, and we've only got 24 hours notice that they're dealing with that bill. So then, do we have a position on it? Do we want to go out and testify? So there's a lot of scrambling going on right now. So again, if you monitor individually the legislature, if you have specific bills, make sure we're aware of that sooner than later. And then we had the celebration with Mr. Harrington.